I call the Select Board meeting to order on Tuesday, December 27 at 7:30 p.m. A motion to open the meeting?
Show move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Roll call. Mr. Gito.
Here.
McKriskey.
Here.
Vice Chair Cavie.
Here.
Mr. Carrara.
Yes.
And I'm here as well. I ask that you stand to salute our flag if you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with Governor Baker's Declaration of June 16, 2021, granting certain pandemic-related authorizations related to public board and town meetings, and recently extended until March 31, 2023, this meeting will be conducted both in person and virtually via Google Meet. The meeting may be recorded by smack, cable television, and broadcast live stream, and maybe livestream at www.stoughton.tv.org. A recording of the meeting, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings will be posted on the town's website and/or smack as soon as possible after the meeting if live broadcast or live streaming is unsuccessful. Times are approximate, and items may be taken out of order at the chair's discretion. We'll start with the Select Board comments. Are there any comments?
I guess I'd like to make a couple.
Yes. Yes, Mr. Gito, please proceed.
It's not often that I do this, but I would like to say just a couple of words about a person who was on the Board of Selectmen when I first got on the Board of Selectmen back in 1975, and that is Joe DeAndrade. He died. We recognized him at town meeting, but I'm probably the only person who has any close knowledge of him. I served with him in 1975, as I said, and he was a very honorable person, very interested in the town, and a man of unquestionable integrity. He was just a really nice guy, and his wife followed him as a member of the Board of Selectmen for many years and was a beloved member of that board. So I wanted to mention that. I also want to mention somebody who was a cousin of mine and who has a connection with the town, had a connection with the town. That was Jack Hurley. We talk about the Hurley Barn. He last operated the Hurley Barn as a dairy. His dad died when he was six, and he quit school and ran the farm for several years, delivering milk with his sisters and brother to folks in the town. Was in the Second World War in the Pacific, part of the greatest generation. He married a gal who lived in Stoughton. His wife died. He moved east and married again. He raised three families, and they all loved him. And he was just buried a couple of weeks ago on his 100th birthday here in Stoughton. And I just, things just come full circle, and I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gito, for sharing such a heartfelt sentiment that you expressed. Moving right along, if there are no other Select Board comments, we'll move to Town Manager comments. Mr. Coulter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of brief comments. On the good news front, we were notified last Thursday that we received an additional $15,000 grant due to the efforts of Senator Timblety. He got it in the FY '24 budget. It's an earmark that goes directly to Stoughton for the use in economic development. Second point I want to make, excuse me, later on in the session, I'm going to present the revised '24 budget. I'm not going to put you through the pains and perils of going through the entire budget as my colleague did last week. We'll go right to the sections that have materially changed from the week before. That's all I have for announcements. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter. Moving right along to our citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments? Before we start with citizens' comments, I would like to remind everyone that some ground rules for the agenda item, which I, as chair, would like to voice as a preference before we begin. Citizens' comments is an opportunity for the board to hear from the public, which shouldn't be a dialogue or a debate. I therefore encourage the board members and the town manager to listen to the comments made and make note of those that you want to follow up on or that warrant further discussion. If it's an item that needs further discussion, I'll put it on the agenda for a future meeting. If it requires follow-up, we can direct the town manager to do so. If the comment doesn't require board discussion at a future meeting or follow-up by the town manager, I would request that we simply try to say thank you and continue to the next speaker and then on to the board's business. I'll try to give everyone all the time that they need, but we have a full agenda as we always do, and I'll ask the speaker to limit the comments to one or two minutes, no more than three. Everyone addresses the board should refrain from making personal charges or disparaging remarks, or from verbal attacks upon the character or motives of members of the town boards or town staff, the citizens, or the community, and/or each other. All speakers are encouraged to present their remarks during public comment in a respectful manner. Whenever possible, please try and refrain from mentioning the names of private individuals in your public comments. With that said, thank you very much for listening, and please proceed by stating your name and your address.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I am Arthur Rigor de Ava, a resident of Greenbrook II Condo Association, and I have a couple of questions concerning recycling. The first is that with 1,689 or so condo occupants or owners and apartment dwellers, we have to pay for our own trash removal, and the recycling fee is on top of that. My personal recycling fee monthly is $50 a month, and that is for recycling collected every other week. So the question is, I wonder if the town could find a fee structure that would allow us to use the Page Street facility transfer station for the recycling. The second question is that the Page Street facility has a sorting capacity, and the Northeast Resource Recycling Association, which is a nonprofit, which has been in business for years and services, Wellesley Public Works Department, puts the vendors, that is the town, in connection with people who will buy the sorted recycle items for a great reduction in the cost of sending them to the MRF's material resource facility. So the question there is, can we look into sorting recyclables in an effective way to reduce the cost of transporting them unsorted to MRFs as is presently done? Thank you.
Thank you very much. What we'll do is some research on those two requests, those two inquiries, and then we'll discuss it at a future meeting via Town Manager.
Madam Chair.
Oh, was that Mr. Gito? Or was that Mr. McKriskey?
No, it was me.
Oh.
Sir, would you be kind enough to send me your contact information? You can send it to lgito@stoughton-ma.gov.
I am a member of the Energy and Sustainability.
I know, so we have your contact.
Thank you so much.
I knew who you were, but I didn't know how to get in touch with you, but now I do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gito.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gito. Mr. McKriskey.
Just want to follow up statement. Madam Chair, as the recycling facility is up there, is a construction and demolition separation facility, has nothing to do with recycling. It is a private entity, not associated with the town, so working for them to solve the town's problem is going to be difficult. We've had a very sporadic line of communication with these folks, and I have just made contact with the New England Region Senior Vice President. We have a meeting scheduled for just after the new year to see what we can do primarily on the tipping fees that we receive, because those are still, sometimes we get too much, and most of the time we don't get enough. So we're going to do that. The recycling facility and the area where we dump leaves and the compost, things like that, is up for discussion. The metals recycling is up for discussions, but anything that that facility does is a total different operation. And unfortunately, with the condos, excuse me, in my tenure on this board, we've talked about it multiple times, and where the condos are private property. We can't do anything in putting trucks on the town roads, on those roads, because they're private property. And again, if we did that, we'd have to pick up all the, you know, three and four, all the four and five family, multifamily dwellings as well. So I think that's all been beaten to death, and we just can't do the condos. But the recycling facility, what we bring up there and how we bring it up may be an option, and that's what we're going to talk about. So once I have that meeting with them, I will follow up with the board and just let everybody know how we made out, and at some time I'd like to bring them before us, because I think long term there's other things we can do, that we might be able to do. One is restore the town's name being on that license for some reason. When that facility was built, I was on the board, and I was the chair of the finance, the finance, that would never happen. I was the chair of the redevelopment authority when we signed the contract for that facility to go in, and then I came on the board, was chairman on the board, and signed it again. So that can be some benefit to us as well in how we collect trash, but if there's something we can do to augment that, make it a little better, that's kind of what I'm looking at. So I will keep the board up to date. This is something that I've been trying to get a meeting going back to July, and they've gone through some tremendous growth, and I think right now it's going to happen.
Thank you, Mr. McKriskey, for that update. So we'll be back in touch. Thank you. Are there any other citizens' comments? Okay, let's go move right ahead to item number five, that is the consent agenda items. Are there any agenda items that the board would like to pull? With, okay, Mr., nope, okay. Can I get a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. That was unanimous decision, and consent, for those in the audience, the consent agenda items are payroll and bill warrants, number A, approval of open meeting minutes for the meeting of December 7, 2022, and the Portuguese National, no, I'm sorry, that is not a part of the agenda. That's the next item on the agenda for discussion. So moving right along to the Portuguese National Club, it's a change of manager. I see our town clerk, Ms. Carrara, moving forward. Is that the one? Okay, that's not.
Sorry.
Okay. Did you have a comment?
I do not.
I'm not sure if this is, yeah, sounds like it's working. So I just want to, I understand that, you know, we have revisited this license in the hopes of being able to meet the new manager. I'm certainly willing to vote on, or even if necessary, make the motion to table this until we're able to get the manager to come before us. I just will remind people that the new manager.
Oh, wait just a minute.
Come on up.
Oh, he's here. Hello. Hello. Please state your name and your affiliation with the Portuguese National Club.
My name is Jordan Correa. I'm the treasurer of the Portuguese National Club.
Thank you very much. Please have a seat. There's a microphone. It's all in green so we can hear what you have to say, and I'll go back to Vice Chair Cavie.
Thank you. Though the new manager is not here.
Unfortunately, he is overseas.
Yeah, to the extent it might be useful information, Manuel Pachico, who is a member of the town meeting, and is somebody who, since he was in my precinct for a very long time, I actually know quite well, and so I'm ready to move on with this application, given my familiarity with him. I think that a lot of people who are on town meeting might know him as well, though if you would like to wait until he gets back or have another chance to meet with him, I understand that. I think personally, I'm ready to move on.
I'm ready to accept a motion if someone is.
Motion to approve of Manuel Pachico as the new manager at Portuguese National Club.
And, all in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Congratulations. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. Happy New Year.
Same to you, Jordan. Good to see you.
Still 7:49. At my discretion, I'll take items out of order, and Juanita's Restaurant is, they have their public hearing at 8:00 p.m., so I'm trying to take care of business and then start with your public hearing right on time. Let's move on to item number eight, which is Village Pub, Nicole Capazoli, located at 1272 Washington Street. It's a disciplinary hearing, alleged failure to conduct licensed business. Does anyone have any updates on that?
Yeah, we received a letter saying that Ms. Capazoli does not intend to attend the meeting tonight.
So Vice Chair Cavie, can you please read that into the records?
Yeah, I'll read it to her email. So this is regarding the Village Pub. "Good morning. As I stated, I am on vacation with my children. I will not be attending the meeting this evening. I did not apply to renew the license for the Village Pub. After a lot of thought, my family and I have decided after 30 years to not reopen. This was a very difficult decision for us. Between the loss of being closed for COVID and the current state of the economy, we have decided, like many small businesses, that this is the best decision for us. Thank you, Nicole Capazoli."
So in that case, I will accept a motion to rescind the license for Village Pub.
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Okay, well, let's move, let's move to the next, okay. We'll start with the annual, item number nine, the 2023 Annual License Renewals, and then we will stop at 8:00 p.m. for Juanita's public hearing. Vice Chair Cavie.
Sure, so this is a continuation of a public hearing from the other night. I'm just trying to find.
Okay. While you're trying to find the place, are there still two items we would like to pull for discussion? One is the Platinum Auto Sales, and the second is the Night of Columbus. Does that still hold true? Okay.
Okay, so in that case, I will make a motion.
Let me turn this on. I'm going to make a motion to approve licenses, licenses. I move that we approve the following Class II licenses.
1450 Washington Street LLC at 1450 Washington Street.
And Stoughton Autobody.
1073 Washington Street.
That's the motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
Did we get an update on all of this, or did you just get an update on all of this?
I'm sorry, Mr. Gito, I'm not able to hear what you.
Was that in the packet? I guess I didn't read it.
Oh, there was some last.
Oh, okay. I'm just trying to make sure that I'm keeping up.
No, no problem.
I approve the following. 1450 Washington Street.
IKEA at one IKEA Way. 1073 at 29 White Street. Deli at 17. At 7. Washington Street. The Wendy's, sure, thank you. The Wendy's comp at 355 Washington Street. Sonic Drive-In at 630 Washington Street. I think that's all of them.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the following convivial license and all alcohol license at Olivia's Grill and Pizza at 752 Washington Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
And finally, Madam Chair, I move that we approve the following convivial inn and all alcohol license for the Hampton Inn at 449 Page Street.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Discussion on, first would be Platinum Auto Sales located at 1873 Washington Street. I think Ms. Carrera, our town clerk, has a comment. Before you step forward, Mrs. Carrera, did you still have comments on this?
Yes.
Okay, please step forward first. After you, our town manager, Mr. Coulter, has a comment as well. Thank you.
Hello, clumsy. Well, hello there. You're not walking with.
No, I'm trying to do it without, but, you know, I'm a little clumsy, but I won't fall. But thank you for allowing me to speak on Platinum Auto Sales. My assistant and I researched what was, for clarification of last week, we researched and found out some information, and what we found out was that, I listened to the, first I listened to the tape, and then when the motion was made, it was motion with just the parking stipulation, which is on the current license. There was nothing on the sewer or septic situation that needed to be corrected. However, upon researching, we found an email from the previous town manager to the chair at the time, and it was amended, the Selectmen's Agenda was amended that day of the hearing, so I don't know if the current, if the chair at the time saw it. I don't know if any members of the board saw it. So what we found out was that the Board of Health Sanitarian wanted the, let me just get my thoughts straight, wanted it to be on record about the septic or sewer situation that was there, and it wasn't done, because I don't, like I said, I don't think anyone on the board actually saw that email that was attached to the amended agenda, which was amended that day of the meeting at 10:10 in the morning. So I brought all this information to our town engineer and our town manager, and I said, I think we should start with a clean slate and suggest to you as the Select Board that I think that this permit should be granted with the stipulation of the parking plan that still exists, with the stipulation that the septic system, is it, septic system, is completed by June 30 of 2023. If it's not.
Septic or it's connected to the sewer?
Is it sewer, septic? Sorry, I get my systems mixed up. But because, because of this unique situation in this era, and I don't think that anyone really saw that email, that the previous town manager had the conversation, and I discussed what I thought should be done with the town manager and the town engineer, and they, they thought it was a good idea. I did verify with the owner of the property. They showed me the contract. I did see it. They've put a huge down payment with the local contractor. I saw the documentation that the contractor went to our engineering department, paid the necessary fees, and I know the owner has been in touch with DPW, and they're just waiting for, I believe, the town engineer can help me out, the MOT for the state. So they're just waiting to get the state okay so that, because I believe the road will need to be open on that. I'm impressed with my knowledge right now. But, yeah, so I really think that, not that I'm representing the owner or the petitioner, I just did the research, and I've been working with them, and I thought this would be the fairest thing to present to you, and hopefully the board would go along with my suggestion.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Carrera. It does support the process, so thank you for filling in the gaps of what actually occurred. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mr. Carrera, and then, Mr. Coulter, sorry about that.
I just want to straighten out the date. It's June of '24, the year, '23, June is gone.
Right.
You said June of '23.
That's all.
No, I just wanted to get that so that they didn't know they were behind the eight ball already.
Yeah, no, I said, it should be June 30 of 2023, that everything should be done.
Yeah, no, 2023, six months from the first of the year. They gave it to you.
Yeah, 2023.
Yes.
Six months from now.
Correct, and that would leave the board open to that if it's not completed, that the town. the town engineer and the town manager can say to this board, you need to call them back in, XYZ hasn't been done. And then everyone's aware of the situation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coulter.
Madam Chair, not much more to say. I think the clerk did a wonderful job of explaining the circumstances. What she's perhaps too humble to say is, this was hours of research. We have a policy, it's a new policy that says nothing comes before the esteemed board unless it's accurate and complete. This was not accurate or complete, but it wasn't the applicant's malfeasance that caused that condition to exist. They spent hours researching it, they got to the bottom of it. I completely concur with the clerk's recommendation that an approval be granted, subject to the completion of the sewer hookup by June 30th.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coulter, and thank you, Mrs. Carrera. Is there anything further to add? Other than that, I would like to add, ask the owners to step forward.
Of course. My only suggestion would be that the two stipulations, that the original stipulation about the parking plan still continued to be on that, because I don't know anything about that, so I don't want to say, oh, that can be taken off. It's not up to me to say that. But to just put on their stipulation that it has to be hooked up by June 30th of 2023. In that way, they're protected and the town's protected.
Thank you very much. And I ask the owners of Platinum Auto Sales to step forward, state your name and affiliate, or one, whoever wants to, wants to say a few words. Please, for the record, please state your name and affiliation with the organization.
Sorry, sir. Just turn the mic on.
Button?
Thank you.
Okay, sure.
You may have to pull a little closer to you, but as long as the light's green, it's on.
Okay. My name is David Kazemi. I am the co-owner of the property at 1873 Washington Street. And as Stephanie mentioned, we've been working on this, we've been working on this sewer system, because it's much better than the septic system. We have spent almost $20,000 so far, and it's going to be another $20,000 that we have to spend to connect the sewer system to the building. I have all the paperwork if you need it, if you want to see the contract. So I just want to say thank you for all the work that Stephanie did. She was extremely helpful, and I hope you, you have to appreciate the work that she did. She did the research, because I remember that issue on that day last year, 2021. None of the, nobody asked any question about the septic system and the parking situation is been taken care of. I just took a picture of the location. I hope that you have seen, you live in the neighborhood, the place 200 times better than it was. We had some operator there that they weren't really, the police was there many times, and we lost a year of income for that property. So I just, I agree with Ms. Stephanie, and we are here to, if you need any paperwork, I have the paperwork to show you, the contract if you like. Would you like for me to give it to you?
Yeah, the town has all of it.
So with that said, do any of the select board members have questions for the owner? Or are you ready to make a motion? Okay, we're all set.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Vice Chair Kavy.
I'd like to make the following motion, that we approve the Class II license for Platinum Car Sales, 1873 Washington Street, with the following two conditions. One, that the parking restriction from previous year be maintained, and also that there be a sewer connection noted later than June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for coming in today.
Have a great.
Thank you. And also thank you to the clerk's office for the, for the hours of research cleaning this all up, and the town manager's office as well. Thank you very much.
Have a great night.
Have a great night. We'll move forward to item number seven, and that is the public hearing, entertainment application for Juanita's Steakout Restaurant located at 577 Washington Street. So first, I would like to discuss, state the process. The process, we will read into record the hearing. Then we'll, I'll accept a motion to open the public hearing. Then we'll take a vote to open the public hearing. Then the Vice Chair Kavy will give us background on your request. The guests, those that represent Juanita's Restaurant, will talk to us why they are here today. Then the select board will ask questions of you. And then citizens will ask questions of you, followed by select board asking more questions if need be. Then the representative of Juanita's will have, make their closing statement. We'll take a motion to close the public hearing, and then a motion to grant the request. And then we'll take a vote. So with that said, I ask you to step forward, and please have a seat. And then I'll turn to Vice Chair Kavy to read into the record the hearing. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Town of Stoughton, notice of hearing. A public hearing will be held by the select board on December 27, 2022, to consider the application of Juanita's Steakhouse located at 755, sorry, 577 Washington Street for an entertainment license to allow live entertainment of less than three people, including vocal live music, instrumental music, and comedy shows, to take place inside the premises of Juanita's Steakhouse, 577 Washington Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts, 02072. Hearing to be held at 8:00 PM. The hearing will be considered in the Great Hall, third floor, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts, and/or virtually, and via Google Meets. It may be broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and livestream. Google Meets video link and telephone connection for public comment available by calling the select board office at 781-341-1300, extension 9212, or email to lwilson@stoughton-ma.gov per order of Deborah C. Roberts, Chair Select Board acting as local licensing authority.
I'll accept a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Vice Chair Kavy, background, please.
So the background that we've been provided shows that the Stoughton Police Department had no concerns, Stoughton Fire Department had no concerns, the Board of Health had approved it, or approved their component of it, but they did have comments. I'll read those in a moment. The Treasury, no concerns, Washington, Water, no concerns. The element for consideration with the Board of Health, I'll read their comments directly. It says, "The Board of Health limitations on seating is 80," which should coincide with the convivial license as associated with the exterior grease trap, sorry, tank slash trap. The establishment requests, sorry, if the establishment requests or is granted a higher seating capacity, i.e. 113, the applicant would then need to pump the exterior grease tank slash trap monthly until such time that the property-sized, larger grease tank is installed. Presently, they are requesting, sorry, required to pump quarterly every three months with the currently approved seating of 80 people, which could also allow an occupancy of 113. Please note, the maximum occupancy of the building is different, usually higher, than the actual seating maximum. In this case, the seating dictates the increased pump frequency of the exterior grease tank slash trap, since a variance was previously granted for the existing undersized exterior grease tack, tank slash trap. Now, my understanding, I read through the, everything, I never saw any place where anybody was asking for additional seating, so I don't know if this necessarily applies, but that was a comment that they put in there, and I just wanted to make you aware of it.
Thank you, Vice Chair Kavy. Please state your name. Oh, go ahead. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Gino. Please state your name and your affiliation with Juanita's Restaurant, Steakhouse.
My name is John America, and I'm the director, and I'm speaking on behalf of Juanita Steakhouse for the license for the music.
Thank you.
And she likes to wish you all happy holidays.
Thank you so very, very much. We wish all of you a happy holiday as well. So please tell us a little bit about, are you planning to expand the seating? I know you're here for your entertainment license.
We just like to have a little music, the people be next, like to have a drink, have the Brazilian food, and just nothing dense, anything, just to be casual, and people be next and ask to get the license, and that's why we over here, to see if you allow.
Thank you. I'll ask my fellow board members if they have any questions to the owner, to the representatives. Yes, Mr. McCrisky.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Mr. America, you're director of the corporation?
Yes.
Okay, and what director, are you the director, treasurer, vice president? What is the actual director role?
I'm just director of the corporation.
Director of the corporation.
She's director too, and she's the manager, and she's 100% owner of the restaurant.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yes.
Mr. Gito.
You only have the ability to have 80 people in that establishment, is that correct?
Yes.
And you don't want to have any more than 80?
Well, if the business pick up, after, we have to come over here, but you know, if you want to give us more, if you want to give more, we take it, but that's what we want to start.
I guess I'm a little concerned if, if the, if the building can seat more than 80 people, then we have to come in and count those people? Or you have to just provide pumping every month instead of quarterly? Is that what I understand?
I'm not really sure with the Board of Health's reason for the comments, because there's no indication that anybody was asking for additional seating anywhere in the application. So I feel like that was sort of a non sequitur from everything related to this particular application.
We had discussion about this before, I thought, in terms of a grease trap at this location. The grease trap person is sitting, sitting right beside you, I think.
Yeah, but the current application right now is simply to be able to have some karaoke music, maybe some live music, and then also comedy shows, like that's really all that's been covered. And we've already approved, I believe, everything else related to the alcohol license last week.
I believe, Mr. Tisdale, you had some additional information, or?
Yeah, I can clarify that for the board. Essentially, what the grease trap sized on the number of seats in an establishment, not how many people that can be in it, as crazy as that sounds. So I think what Larry from Board of Health is saying is that the occupancy load is greater than 80 for that establishment, over 100, I think you said, Steve.
113, which I assume includes like staff.
Yeah, so the occupancy load is 113, but the number of seats is 80. You can have 100 people in there, 20 standing, but that does not affect the sizing of the grease trap. That's the way the regulations read.
That's kind of interesting.
Thank you, and I believe the next request, so not only did you, oh, yes.
I mean, it would seem to me that if, if there are 80 seats, but there are 100 people there, those 100 people are going to be using that establishment. And if we're going to have entertainment there, instead of just seating for dinner, then you've changed the likely condition of that place to, in fact, be able to have more people there than the seats. I mean, that's not, that's not unusual to see at a, at a place that has entertainment. So I would, I would suggest that, that we consider requiring monthly pump out of the grease traps, and they can decide whether or not they want to do that, or increase the grease traps in the street and be done with it. It would seem to me that in the longer term, they would be wise to do that. I mean, it just, it adds value to the property, and we don't have to deal with, with potentially cleaning a sewer.
Yes.
We can check when it's 80 people, we can just say, we cannot put any more people in a restaurant, you know, if that makes the board more comfortable, we can count the people, and it's 80, we don't allow anybody else to come. We don't have no problems with the board, or the fire department, or the police, anyway.
I think what Mr. Gito is proposing, I'll let him restate, he's giving you an opportunity here. So, Mr. Gito, please restate that. I don't think.
Well, let me, let me say it a different way. I don't think that we should get into an issue of whether or not there are 80 people in an establishment, sometimes in 113 at other times. I mean, that's putting an administrative burden on the town that we really don't need to get into. I think that the applicant can make a decision as to whether or not he wants to pump the grease trap every month, or if he wants to change the size of the grease trap for the facility and be done with it. I mean, it's not, it's not our business, I don't think, to spend extra time either in police or Board of Health to deal with this kind of an issue.
Mr. Carrera.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Through you to Mr. Tisdale, Town Engineer. This grease trap is undersized? What size is it? Is it 1,000?
1,500, excuse me. I just serve clean.
It's a 1,500?
It charged us for 1,300 dollars.
According to Larry, the Board of Health has issued a variance for that grease trap. So anything above 80 seats would require an additional sized grease trap. Grease traps is, they're sized on the number of seats, not the number of people in the building.
Right.
So you want 80, 80 seats? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so then that's the request. The next is, I believe, you could correct me if I'm wrong, you want it to have an entertainment license that starts on December 31, 2022.
We'd like to do this as possible, because, you know, it'd be good for the business to make some money, because you just start, if you could allow this, it'd be very kind.
So this is, I don't have that in writing, but that was from word of mouth that I heard, that that was an added request. So to my fellow board members, I would like your comments on that or questions. That was, that's a change. Is that Mr. Carrera? And then Vice Chair Kavy.
I don't, I don't think we should be augmenting the process. We have a process that's been put into the clerk's office. It was half up here in the Board of Selectmen's office, now it's all down there. I think if we're going to go with complete, I think we got to go with complete dates too. We can't be bending dates, because people want to have parties for, you know, different reasons. If it says this license starts on a certain date, that's what we have to stick by. I will not vote to bend dates. It's not fair to other people, it's not fair to us. We're going to start changing everything.
Thank you, Mr. Carrera. Vice Chair Kavy.
So, I might have missed it, but I actually didn't find a place on here that specified a date. I imagine, I know this application's been lingering for a little while, I think it was, it had to be rewritten or resent recently, but I think the idea was to get this up and running sometime in this year, it sounds like it might only be the last couple of days of the year. Nevertheless, we would have just renewed this in the coming year, anyway, and I think, I think what you're asking for is, like, I think there's more drama than necessary. There's just, they just want to have a karaoke machine, and like some acoustic, you know, entertainment. I don't really find this to be controversial. I would say, you know, I personally feel we should get the public comment on this, but I feel comfortable approving this license for the current year, for the last couple of days of the current year, and then renew it in the following year without an additional fee for the second year.
Thank you, Vice Chair Cavie. Or, Mr. McCrisky?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have a problem giving a license the last couple of days of the month, and then following into the free, the next year, where we do have that authority, but I do think that if we're going to do that, it should be in writing, it's being asked for by the petitioner, so that we can vote accordingly. I think it sets a dangerous precedent when we stop picking dates, and we don't have any way to track the documentation of these dates. So if we allow it here, and somebody comes in the next week and says, I want mine for the same thing, and it's not documented, God forbid somebody goes in for an enforcement action, they don't have it listed on their license as to when this is in effect. We had that happen a few years back at the Cedar Hill Golf Course, and it ended up in just a chaotic mess, that brought the police in, court action, you know, it was ugly, it was real ugly, because the proper documentation was not there. So I don't have a problem, I think right now, we should just vote this for the first of the year, if, in starting, you know, we won't, if somebody wants this, it was discussed, I don't know when it was discussed, or if this was just somebody's, you said it was hearsay. You can't vote a license on hearsay, you vote a license on a formally submitted application. So I don't have a problem, if this application came forward and said, I'd like it to be effective this night of the 27th, for the next couple of days, going into the new year, fine, it's documented, the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed, we're all covered. Because if the place opens up and the license isn't in their hands this coming weekend, and the police show up, and there's no entertainment license in their hand that shows they're documented to be operating in the month of December, we're going to have another mess on our hands. You know, so it's not fair to the petitioner, it's not fair to Town Hall, and of course, if the police department was out there, it's not fair to them, because they have nothing to document that they have a valid license. That's my concern. I wouldn't be in favor of this now, as much as I want to be, I just don't like the process that it's not documented correctly, not even in the application, it's not mentioned. Pretty tough now to go picking dates out of the sky and saying, okay, what works for you? So, my thoughts.
And to my fellow board members, no, I did not receive anything in writing for this request. Is that true, Lena? Nothing in writing?
Mr. America, talk to me about the rest of the day.
Which was today? Just thinking about the process, today is the 27th, and by the time we go through the mechanics of typing things up and getting it to you, it's likely to be past the 31st, anyway, because of just the way we operate. I would like to have something in writing as well. I know it's a karaoke machine, and it just doesn't seem like it's that risky, but not having something tangible, a license in hands, does put us in jeopardy.
If you press the left.
So I would.
Madam Chair, if I may, your point, that's exactly what happened at the golf course. When the police department went up, and it wasn't, the proprietor had nothing to do with it, it was successful, a lot of people showed up, there was an altercation in the parking lot, which brought the police department there, they went in looking for the liquor license in this case, and the proprietor pulled out not what was a liquor license, although the board had voted for a liquor license, the proprietor pulled out the application and showed the date that we were going to discuss this. And so that's not a license, the police department shut them down, people accused them of, you know, being, you know, against the proprietor, and it was just, it was a nightmare, and I don't want to see this happen again, you know, we're just, like you said, there's no way we'll get it into their hands in time, if something happens up there, the liability to the town for not doing it the right way is just, it's too much.
So in that case, I am open to a motion from, still in public hearing? Okay. Citizens, citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments?
Motion to close the hearing?
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
Make a motion to approve the license as submitted.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
No.
So there are four in favor and one no. The motion carries, and your license is effective January 1st, 2023.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Vice Chair Cavie?
Just, this is more of a question, but item nine, the annual license renewals, I think, I remember hearing that we were going to revisit something with regard to the Knights of Columbus?
Yes, the Knights of Columbus, we have, all right, Mr., Mrs. Carrara is no longer here, but this was a change of manager's license. This is not a public hearing, but it is a hearing within that license. We have not received a formal sign off from the police department. Mr. Coulter, do you have any information to share on that?
Only that the signature of the sign off, the department has not yet been received.
Could you speak louder, please?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I have the same information you do from the clerk, that they have not received the sign off. There's no explanation as to why they haven't received the sign off, just that they haven't been received. We have no reason to believe it's a problem, it just hasn't happened. If the board is so inclined, if the board would pass this subject to the signature of the police department, I would walk that through tomorrow, if you so choose, if not, it would be taken up next Tuesday. Next Tuesday, I'm sorry. I'd be happy to walk it through, and without the signature, we wouldn't issue it.
Madam Chair, through you to Town Manager, I just want to make sure I understand this. So we have a change of manager.
Correct.
But also, we have a renewal of the club and all alcohol license. And so, in order to do the renewal, we first have to do the manager, change of manager?
That's correct.
Okay.
I couldn't hear you either, Steve, I'm very sorry.
So the, yeah, so we have two things we're trying to, we have to approve. One is, what's really before us is the club and all alcohol license, and that's actually what's on the agenda, so I think.
See, Mr. Cavie, I wasn't aware of the change of manager until you just said that.
Okay.
I'm sorry about.
So there was a change of manager license, or a change of manager?
That's what I was informed, but Mrs. Carrara, she left before she gave us, she was going to speak to the issue.
Okay, so we might not have enough information, I'm, just from my own point of view, the only thing that we actually have on an agenda is the renewal of a license. We don't have anything related to manager license, change of manager, so I don't know if we're really able to proceed with this, though I do have a note here saying that the club and all alcohol license is complete and ready to be voted on by the board.
It's complete.
That's the note that we have on the paperwork in our package, and it doesn't seem to specify any conditions of any other votes, but it is highlighted, it looks like somebody was trying to tell us something, so I just want to make sure, I can say it's, I certainly don't want to, you know, leave anybody waiting with a license.
Madam Chair, may I suggest?
Yes, Mr. Coulter, yes.
That you vote on what's before you, and if it's that simple, then I'll walk it through after we get the police chief's signature. If it is a change of manager, I think that's got to be a more formal session before the board. Right.
Yeah.
So it's a question of whether the board wants to accommodate the applicant and vote on that issue, but if I find out in tomorrow through the clerk, that it also requires a change in management hearing, then I don't think we can move it forward until next Tuesday.
Do we have an application?
Yes, Mr. Carrara.
We don't, not for a change of manager, just for a change, just for a license. I wasn't aware of a change of manager.
Mr. Carrara?
Can you use the microphone, please?
There is an application for the change of manager license, they're just waiting
for a sign off by Brian Holmes, who's out.
So we do have the per usual, I'm sorry, I have to turn on my mic. The renewal that Vice Chair Cavie is reading from, and your understanding as well, is the change of management, that we're waiting for the police department to sign off.
Right.
Which we don't have that. So that's the one we're waiting, we could make a contingent, everything else is in hand for the per usual renewal that Vice Chair Cavie is reading. For the change in management, we can make, if we so choose, can make that contingent on sign off from the police department. So that's the complete story.
It's completely your choice.
I move that we approve the license for, renew of the license. If we have that information that's complete, I think that we should move on that.
Second.
Mr. Carrara? On, motion is on the table, but, Mr. Carrara?
I wanted to speak before Lou made the motion to straighten out what we're doing here. We're voting on a license without a manager in position. Whether we're waiting for a signature, there's an application, I don't have the application, which means, in my eyes, there is no manager. So if we vote a license without a manager being in position, and something goes wrong, as Joe would say, and it happens in that place a lot lately, I don't want to be part of it. That's not a complete application.
Mr. Coulter, because I saw your hand first, and then Vice Chair Cavie?
I bow to the senior person.
Vice Chair Cavie?
I was going to say that I actually don't have any evidence that they don't have a manager, right? Because we have, all we know is that they're going to be changing managers, but it's not to say that they don't currently have a manager, and that's not before us. All I have is that the application was complete, as attested by the clerk's office, I feel like, and you know, and everyone signed off on this renewal. And so, you know, I do support going ahead with this. If they have a change of manager license, then, you know, that might come with the works, but I'd like to think that we could clear that up pretty quick, and we can always hold the license, you know, contingent on clearing up this question about the manager's, change of manager license. If they currently have a manager, they get the license, if they don't currently have a manager, then they don't get the license.
Is there a manager that signed the license for renewal?
Well, I'm guessing their current manager would have applied for the license, but I don't know if they necessarily.
Mr. Coulter?
Yes, if the board would allow me that leeway, I'll use due caution. If it is simply the application for the renewal of the license, and the police chief or deputy agrees, then we will process it accordingly. I agree with Mr. Cavie that the application may be a change of manager in the future, that they want to deal with in February, March, or April, and May. Until they complete that change of manager application, we have to assume that it's not contiguous with what's before us. I'll report back to each of you individually, if you so choose, and if it's simply the change of, enough change, the renewal of the licensure, I'll move it forward, if not, I'll call each of you.
So just to refresh our memory, the motion on the table is from Mr. Gito to renew the, what is it, the all alcohol license?
It's club and all alcohol license for the Knights of Columbus at 14 Seaver Street.
Okay, if I can get a second?
I did second that.
Okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Mr. Carrara says no.
One question, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Is it the policy of the board, and I suppose I could check the bylaw as well, that the board wishes to meet new managers?
That has been our practice in the past.
Okay, good to know.
Thank you. And we're moving on to item number 10, which is the last item on our list, and this is fiscal year 2024 operating budget presentation continued, and I hand the mic over to Mr. Coulter.
It's my honor today.
Alrighty.
So I'd like to review for the board, and for the, and for general information for the public of the schedule for getting to the January 18th for completion of this budget and turning it over to the Finance Committee. So, obviously, it'll be publicly posted, but tonight, we're going to present the portions of Mr. Tisdale's presentation that myself and the committee and Mark have worked together and have adjusted for your consideration. Tuesday, January 3rd, will be the first meeting with our department heads, half of the department heads, and that's the opportunity for the board to ask questions directly of the department heads. Tuesday, January 10th, is the second department head meeting, where the board can question and get answers directly from the department heads who are key to developing their department budgets. On Tuesday, the January 17th, the Select Board will convene for just a general discussion and final points on the board, and then a final vote on the Selectmen's budget. Assuming that happens, the following day, Wednesday, January 18th, by noon time, Mark and I will deliver the budget to the Finance Committee. And just a bit of thanks to the Finance Committee by charter, we're expected to deliver it on the 17th. We asked for a one-day reprieve, so we could get that day in before, the Tuesday, the 17th, for final review.
Thank you. While we're here regarding the date that is set by the charter, I would ask the board if we could adhere to that deadline as much as possible. I know Chairman Nanokian gave us an extension, but I still, if we can, and it's the will of the board, that we adhere to that date as much as possible. Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Very good, we'll work toward that, Madam Chair. So if you'll please pull out this presentation that we did, that Mark did a couple of weeks ago, we're going to go directly to page three. There are several amendments that the committee, Mark and I, made that I'd just like to go through. We still have a commitment to level services, although in certain cases, particularly the police and fire, the demand has far exceeded their current capacity, and although you're not going to see major budget increases, we're going to leave that issue open until the chiefs come in here for discussion, so we can ask them directly. In the budget before you, there are no new hires for the fire department and a half position in the police department. The budget is balanced, the fiscal year '24 budget is balanced, there's $28,000 under the levy limit. Very important is, we've made an early attempt in our business plan, if you will, to do some cross-functioning staff assignments and some consolidation. Later on, you're going to see where some folks were reclassified, and it's not because we want to give exorbitant raises, it's because we're asking those people to do more, so that we do not have to hire additional clerks and staff. Now, I also want to point out, when we get to that section, that the approval of the budget does not automatically trigger any raises, it just puts the money in the budget. Each person considered for a reclassification will be interviewed, will be evaluated, and will have a clear job description before we give any pay increases for a change in class. So in this particular sense, we're not talking about people, we're talking about positions, and we're talking about just budgeting the money. The actual triggering of pay increases is a mountain we haven't yet climbed yet. Now here's the difficult part of this budget, there are three parts of this budget that in most budget years would be considered budget busters. This is the first one. Our employee health care has been underfunded for a few years, and it is in immediate requirement of a rate adjustment. And by the way, the Employees Insurance Commission, the IEC, came up with a proposal for an 8.4% increase on the town side, and on their side, it's a 70-30 split. It would be somewhere under 4% increase. And in addition to that, the legislature several years ago gave us flexibility of option, of plan design options, would have to do with co-pays, deductibles, and so forth. We're looking at all of those options, and if this board approves the final budget, we're going to seek to have a hearing to have them implemented in this fiscal year. We're running at a very substantial deficit in that trust fund. All it means is the expenses for, the total expenses for employees is far exceeding the money that we're putting into the program. It simply needs to be adjusted for substantially increased costs, Mr. Gito.
How much?
Over $800,000 a year would be the 8.4% increase.
Thank you. It's kind of important for people to know that it's what the numbers are.
Agreed. Later on in the budget, you'll see that number. Stand right out. The second most difficult issue that we have to tackle, and I've spoken to each of you individually, and I know you understand the challenge, and that's in the enterprise funds. Both water and sewage enterprise funds are running at a substantial deficit. The Budget Committee and Mark and I, our recommendation is to not fix it in one year. That would be rather difficult. So we have enough subsidies in other sources, whether it be the MWRA fund, whether it be through the operating budget, whether it be through free cash, or whatever, we have enough options, limited options, to get through five years. And with a steady but moderate increase every year, we will have a balanced budget by the fifth year. And if we have a great year, we can accelerate that. But that seems to be, it's what we're recommending based upon a lot of discussion, balancing our citizens' capabilities that we're very sensitive to versus the need to balance an enterprise fund. So for the enterprise fund for water, we're recommending an 8.2% increase in the first year, and for the sewer, it would be 4.6% increase in the first year. Later on in the presentation, I'll tell you what that equates to in terms of dollars to the average household water and sewer bill. We'll get back to that. We're still estimating very moderate, I wouldn't go as far as conservative, but moderate growth in local receipts, i.e. meals, licenses, permits, and the like.
Could we go back to the last part?
Yes.
Just for a moment?
Go right ahead.
I think it's probably helpful to understand that those numbers are 8.2 increase each year, so it's not just one year.
Correct.
That we're doing 8.2. It turns into 16.4, 24.6, and so on and so forth, so that as we move through the five-year period, we are increasing the budget, I mean, the cost for water and sewer by not just 8.2% or 4. whatever. And so that raises another point from my perspective. Do you want me to do this now or later?
We are getting to it in the budget, that very discussion. You will see it in the budget.
You want me to do that later? I'll just be quiet then?
Well, I wouldn't say that, sir. If we could get through this, and then we'll get back to exactly.
Okay, good enough.
You're raising right now. The projections for labor contract, we've held at 2%. Some may be a little higher, some may be a little lower. We're shooting for 2% average. Increased efforts in online permitting, licensure, and public records requests, again, very expensive going to online permitting, but with the activity for development, we see coming down the road is a substantial need, and that number includes the hardware, the software, the training, and should also help us be more efficient with staff, because we're not going to be doing everything in paper. Increased emphasis on diversity, equity, and inclusion, we're going to discuss that in greater detail a little later as well. Increased emphasis on the Commission on Disability Services. Investment in the restructuring of pay scales and job descriptions. Again, a major problem, and I understand Scott's frustration with this. By the end of this fiscal year, not the one we're in, yes, the one we're in, we expect to have pay scales that are understandable, job descriptions that are actionable, measurements that are quantitative. We don't have that right now, and we have to have it if we're going to negotiate contracts, and most importantly, if we're going to have equity across the board with pay raises. So it's going to be a lot of work, but by July 1st, we expect to have that in place. Strategic capital investments in town-owned buildings and town center beautification. This was Mr. Gito's recommendation from last week's meeting. We have budgeted architectural design for a new parking lot to the side of the building and for beautification around the building and in the town center. And we also expect through this budget to be able to do some incremental improvements as early as this summer, just by looking at what needs to be perked up, and we call that low-hanging fruit. We'll get that perked up. Renewed emphasis on auditing of internal operations and management control. In some areas of the town, there are extraordinary and highly effective management control systems in place. In other parts of town government, there are not. So our emphasis in the business plan is to strengthen management control in every department we have in the town. And both Mark and I believe it's vital that we accomplish that by the end of this fiscal year as well. Time is of the essence with that. And last, by agreement, the school committee, I'm told, is coming in with a 2% budget increase. This budget that we're preparing is relying upon that commitment and that increase. On the next page, it's really just an outline, I need not read it to you. The reason the budget will change even after the FinCom gets it is there is so much data coming in from third-party resources, as always. There'll be costs, there'll be school assessments, there'll be chapter 70, chapter 90, unrestricted local aid, union contractual agreements, and new growth. We don't know any of them right now. So as those numbers come in, and we adjust the budget to reflect those new numbers, we will be coming back to you again before town meeting, once we've collected all that Next page is really self-explanatory. It shows where our projected revenue is coming from. And you'll see enterprise reimbursements. That's not the subsidy, that is, that's the indirect cost paid at the end of the year to the general fund, even when there's a deficit. So I can, I think you can see pretty clearly, the enterprise funds are a big portion of the projected revenue summary, and we can't afford for them not to be balanced. And again, I hate to bring that news to you on my second or third week in the job. It's a fixable problem. I'm not insensitive to the impact on citizens. Each of you have expressed to me your concern about the affordability, and I respect that, and I appreciate the way you represent your constituents, but there are no more resources to tap into that allows us to deal with this problem at a later date. The next page, municipal departments, you'll see that it's a 3% increase or $900,000. The education is a 2% increase or $1.13 million. The joint expenses have gone up significantly, and that's $2.47 million. A big portion of that is healthcare. So the total general fund is a 3.9% increase or $4.517 million. The next page is the, it's the most difficult page in the presentation. Mark so kindly described it as key budget drivers, and they are. I would, I would call them as very challenging budget busters. If you look at where the arrows are, healthcare for the town portion in this one year is going up $907,000. Townwide, excuse me, retirement is going up 10%. And the sewer is going up $509,000. That'll be subsidized through the general budget. Those are all very difficult, unforecasted, unusual challenges that we have to address. Health, we have to address this fiscal year, and the budget for the sewer and the water is going to require a public hearing, so we'll be able to give the public all the information they need and they deserve. As you all recall, when you hired me, you asked me to be totally transparent with our general public. That public hearing will be the opportunity for us to share with them what's causing the problem, what we're doing to fix it, how long it will take, and what the outcome will be after we fix it. The next page are the enterprise accounts. As you can, as you can read, we're forecasting 3.2% revenue growth in both water and sewer, but the subsidy from the general fund for water is $1,200,000 rounded off. For the sewer enterprise fund is $509,000. Cedar Hill is actually, actually, in the black, balanced plus a surplus. And public health, we're still trying to figure that out, but with the, with the help we got from ARPA, it's about a $45,000 deficit. No, $45,000 subsidy.
Jumping in on that particular item.
Please do.
The actual total subsidy for that group is $45,000 plus $328,000. So it's $470,000 total. That we can't use for other things. I mean, we're talking about general fund, but it doesn't make any difference what pot it's in.
I'm sorry, that's noted at the bottom of your page.
Yeah, but I mean, it's, it's important to recognize that and not just think that it's, well, it's only ARPA money, because ARPA money can be used for a lot of other things that we need to do in town. Pardon me.
No, I think it's a point well made, Mr. Gito. So between those three, 1.3, the 509, and add in the $300-plus thousand, $328,000, you've got a 1.792 from the general fund, but Mr. Gito's right. It's actually over $2 million because we're getting over $300,000 in ARPA money. So these enterprise funds, particularly human services, add a real service to the community. We need to fix them. And there's lots of ways, and Lou and I have spent a lot of time discussing ways that we can fix them. The water and sewer is simply a rate adjustment. There's not much we can do to fix it. The water is passed through from MWRA in many cases, and the sewer is as well. And so we just have to pay the piper on these things. It's a difficult, difficult thing to do, but the time is now to have to do it. I'm really delighted to bring you this wonderful news on my second week.
That's why you were hired.
Well, thank you for that, Lou. I appreciate it. The next budget, the next slide shows department structural changes. Now, police, there's a half a person, as you know, there were 7.5 new hires, FTEs, on the last presentation. That's down to 2.04. The only thing I need to keep open for discussion and further analysis beyond what you see is the fire department asked for three new hires purely in response to the increase in EMS, in transport. As you know, we have a new ambulance coming, and their numbers are going up by double digits every year. So we didn't approve the three. First, we took it down to two, and then we wiped it out altogether. But after meeting with the chief again today, he's gathering more data on what we will raise from the original, from the incremental transports with how we cover those incremental transports instead of going outside to a private service. When the chief comes next week, we'll have a more detailed analysis, and I ask that we reserve judgment on those new hires with the board until after that presentation. The next page is the reclassifications, and I know my colleague to my left has strong feelings about this. Again, what we're trying to do is consolidate. Almost every department has a need because of increased work for additional staff, and we're not approving them. But what we have to consider are those people who have very significant capabilities and who are willing to take on extra responsibilities, giving them either a stipend or addition in their base salary, one or the other. And we'll quantify that for you, we have quantified that for you in the budget, but that's what those rebuttal. I want to make it clear, as I already said once, this doesn't mean people are getting these adjustments. There'll be a job description, there'll be measurements, there'll be a classification, and there'll be a formal interview I'll do with each one of them. But if we do the interview and do all those things, and we don't have the money in the budget, then there's nothing we can do about it if everything goes well and they're deserving of incremental merit increases.
Mr. Coulter?
Yes.
Did you develop, have you had an opportunity to develop an organization chart? Because I'm really, as I'm looking at the FTEs and the new hires and the consolidation, I'm trying to understand the span of control and also understand what do these titles mean? Program admin to, to office administrator in the private sector, that's, that's not clear.
That makes two of us.
It just doesn't, doesn't, not very clear what that means.
I concur.
Does that mean that they go from staff to management, so non-union to union, or I just don't even know what that means?
The answer to your first question, we got it at 4:00 today. So we do have an org structure, Mark and I need to review it together tomorrow. We'll circulate this well in advance of next Tuesday's meeting, so we'll be able to do that analysis. As we speak to the department heads, we'll have it right in front of us. But we got it at 4:00 today. This was a big task. We had to coordinate between every department what their staffs are, and then Mark's group did a wonderful job of putting it together in no time flat. So we'll have this to you by the end of this week, so you'll have the weekend to look it over. But I agree with your point. I mean, when I've tried to make heads or tails of it, there's no formal structure to it at all, at all. And it leaves, it leaves ample opportunity for people to unfairly be enriched or not be treated meritoriously for their work they're doing. It's both sides. So it's, we've got a consultant on board that's already paid, this is what he does. We're bringing him in to do this work for us, we're not going to have to go outside, not for us, but with us. And it's my goal to have a new rate scale that we have to negotiate with the unions, a new rate scale, and a, and at least very clear job description, so we know when they're going from A to B, what that means, what the major difference is. I don't know.
I'm glad you said that, because a town accountant, a town accountant is a universal title, right? You would say town accountant, one, two, three, whatever, senior level town accountant. But going from senior clerk two to program admin one, what?
What does it mean?
You're right. It's a town accountant. You're right. Okay, well, so thank you. I look forward to your presentation at our next meeting.
I look forward to Mark getting right on it. I'm kidding.
Oh, Mr. Carrera.
The only reason why I'm concerned about some of these things, and I'm not going to hide behind it, I'm going to say it, and I've talked to the town manager, and when you, I like the term enrich, that's, that's pretty good. When you enrich people, some of them are in unions, so they get enriched to this level, and then they get 2.0, and then 2.0, and 2.5, or they might go 2, 2, 1.75. There's people that have contracts, and they got to do the bargaining either with this board here or with the gentleman right here. I'm going to say it again, I don't believe that the budget team's job is to raise people's wages. That is for this guy here. But it's already out of the gun, because that was already allowed to go on. It doesn't happen in the private sector, and I can tell you that right now. When they do something and it's to push a company on, raising salary is not in the budget team's thing, it's what the end result is, what the money that's going to get delivered for. It's what the end result is, what the money that's going to get delivered for, I love everybody when they use the word "team," it's for the whole team. Mayor Unit says, you don't reward people in the municipal sector with money. You build a strategy to pull them together, and you make them feel as though they're part of something, they're going this way, and they have the protection of the covenant. People like some of us in the private sector, they reward them with money because you don't have any protection. Because if you don't produce, you're history. I just, I was taken off my feet when I expected a budget to come in with, you know, how we were going to save, how we were going to move forward, how we're going to consolidate. And I see all these positions of raises. And then I see other people who have dug in, produced, and grossly underpaid, not even mentioned in it. And I won't mention names, but it just seems like this is, I count on the town manager to get a handle on this, that some people are rewarded and some people aren't.
Thank you for sharing. Before, Mr. Coulter, Vice Chair Cavie, did you have something to add?
Nope. Thank you.
Mr. Coulter?
I just want to renew my promise to the board that no one will get, no non-union person will get a raise without us knowing exactly what we expect of them, what they can expect of us, how we're going to measure them, and there will be nothing automatically triggered. What the budget committee was asked to do, and they did it, was where there are opportunities to consolidate and someone is going to take on more work, that they be considered for merit pay. We agree that whatever title they're given is meaningless right now. I'm not sure I know what any of them mean, but there'd be money in the budget. So when I sit with an individual to consider them, and they are deserving, that there's money there for us to pay them. If we didn't, if they didn't put it in the budget, there would be an evaluation, but there'd be no compensation to go with that exceed expectation measurement. So that's all. This, I don't want anybody to think, Scott, I don't want you to think the budget committee is giving raises. They're not. They're not. There's not even an expectation that certain people will get it. There's simply money in the budget in case we conclude in the new fiscal year, which is next July, that they're deserving, for the good of the organization, not just for their own personal enrichment. But maybe they're taking on additional duties which prevents us from having to hire a person that costs us another $20,000 in health insurance. So it's a process, and nothing's going to happen until we have some structure to measure it against. I promise you that.
Well, the term that was used was comparables. That's what it was. It had nothing to do with who was going to do duties. It was, we went out, we looked in Hingham, we looked in Falmouth, we looked here, and oh my God, somebody who got a $10,000 raise last year is looking to get almost 20 this year because of a comparable. I would have liked to have seen the comparables since it's our budget, our budget. I'd like to see where it came from, how it stands, how I'm going to, you know, feel comfortable about it. Because I'm the one who has to talk to the people outside. How could you do this to us? Now our sewer and water is going to be raised, and people are making millions of dollars, and how come? How come? I saw it last year, not too happy about it this year. And I just don't know where, you just...
But Scott, you're telling me, if I may, that you're not happy about something this year that hasn't happened, and you will be informed. I am never going to give a $10,000 increase unless there's a real good reason, unless I discuss it with each one of you.
I haven't gone through the lines yet, but are these comparables in the lines here?
I have not seen any comparables.
You know, to increase those?
It's not always a comparable to the golf course manager in Hingham. It may be a person's salary, it's what the chart says about consolidation. It may be a person who's getting $50,000, right? Hypothetically. And we either have to hire a clerk at low paid, but let's call it $35,000 plus health insurance, another $20,000, or this person will take on all of those duties, work a little harder, work a little longer, and they get paid extra money, which to an outside person looks like a 10% increase or a 20% increase, but it's saving us $50,000. And I will be able to personally defend any decision made like that as being a cost-saving measure. I don't give out big raises without there being reasons. All I'd ask, I can't control what happened in the past, but I'm delighted to be held personally accountable for what's happening in the future, and I'll make sure you have that data, just like we sat down today in my office, and I sat down with Lou. I'll make sure people understand the reasoning behind any decision before it's made, not after it's made. I promise you that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coulter.
Thank you.
Are we going to have an opportunity to talk about the capital plan items as well tonight?
I assured Mr. Gito today that within two weeks of presenting this budget to the FinCom, that Mark and I will have a three-year capital budget, which is required by the charter. Three, oh, we can do five even if you want. Three is required by the charter. And Mr. Gito makes a very, very good point. We have an enormous amount of capital requirements in the town that have been unaddressed for a while. The only way we can, as Scott just pointed out, Mr. Carrera just pointed out, we have to speak to our constituents. The only way they're ever going to possibly understand those infrastructure and capital requirements is if they see a long-term plan. So we're committed to getting that together, Mark and I, in the next couple of weeks and having it before the board, well before we reach consensus on this budget.
Thank you very much.
But we do have the one year for you today.
Thank you. So this is the one-year capital project plan?
All right. Thank you very much. In your package, I think you've had two spreadsheets. The way we're tracking our capital items, all our articles are actually by a spreadsheet. That's how we do things now. So there's one that is pretty long, pretty extensive. Lena, you can bring up the master one if you could. That one is tracking every article we have for this coming town meeting. The deadline is to have the warrant completed by the first Tuesday in February, correct? So now, we're not just talking about capital, we're talking about every article that we have. And the easiest way to organize that is a spreadsheet from top to bottom by department that organizes that. In this spreadsheet that we have here that Lena's pulled up, thank you very much, Lena, there is a column that says "capital." You can see the, right there. No, Lena, you're right there. Just keep on scrolling over. There you go. Right next to the article. And if it's a capital article, it says the word "capital" next to it. Very difficult to understand that, yes. So what I, if you needed me to repeat, I can repeat. Don't be laughing at my jokes. Yeah, all right. There's another spreadsheet that's in your package, and we're going to do away with this. It looks, it's a blow-up version, and I reduced, it's the same spreadsheet you're seeing here, but I took columns off. Ones, articles that were not capital, I hid so you couldn't see them, and I just showed you the capital ones. I think the easiest way to move forward is having one spreadsheet that has all the articles on it like you see there. So if it's okay with the board, we're going to move forward with this spreadsheet, which is, again, the same thing as this, has all the same information on it, just more extensive. So as you move forward through the spreadsheet, it starts off with the yearly articles. This was taken from Bill Rowe's input from the previous years. It's pretty standard articles such as unpaid bills, receive reports, things of that nature. As you scroll down, Lena, you get into more color areas, and it goes by department. So for example, the police department. This is the spreadsheet, the area of the spreadsheet for the police. They have three marked cruises, for example. Since that's a capital item, it says "capital" next to it. The amount requested, and then how we're proposing to pay for that article. And this was done with Bill Rowe, looking at what we have available for free cash. As the board may know, we're using 2.3 million to fund the operating budget with free cash. The extra from the 5.1 we got minus, I think, a $250,000 article from special town meeting is the difference we can fund these articles with. These are just recommendations. So as you go through this article spreadsheet, you'll see what we're proposing to fund from free cash. We do use up all the free cash, so there are some areas that we do need to borrow for, and you'll see that in the spreadsheet. In a nutshell, that's what it is. If you have any detailed questions, we can certainly answer that. I would recommend we answer those detailed questions next week when we bring the department heads in for their budget. They can also answer questions for their articles at the same time. I know Mr. McCrisky, McCrisky's been heavily involved with a lot of the vehicle things in the spreadsheet, so he's already had some input into that portion. I know Mr. Gito would like some downtown improvements. He's had some input into that. We can focus on that next week in more detail. So I know several of you have had questions in several areas of this already. The big part on this is some of these projects are reflective of that special capital survey that we did. For example, the downtown landscaping. The online permitting is in here for that, and those were all reflective of that survey that we came up with. We're not at the point, I think, yet where we have the train depot on here because we're still analyzing what we're going to do with that. But I would anticipate next year at this time, that would be in this spreadsheet. So generally, that's how that's laid out. Does the board have any input? If you have any additional articles you would like put into the spreadsheet, we can add that at any point in time, tonight, next week. We have three meetings we can add articles in, into the spreadsheet.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Vice Chair Cavie.
Through you, I'd just like to mention, first of all, thank you for the work you've done on this. I know it's taken a long time, but also it's very clear, very easy to understand. I do need you maybe to go over that capital thing one more time. It's just like a column that just, if it says "capital." Anyway, slow it down, slow it down, you know? But no, so the, I noticed one of the articles that I wanted to have in here has been included. It was related to a charter change. I appreciate that. It's at the very end. From the survey that we received back, one of the things I thought stood out to me was actually renovations to the police station, expansion of the police station, something that we had discussed, or we have been discussing for a very long time. I think that was the highest ranked, if I'm not mistaken, I think it's like 61% of people...
That was, the train depot was highest ranked, but the police station was right up there.
My memory's not that great. But the police station was up there, much higher than I thought it would have been. For a long time, we were, we had discussed a public safety building, the mechanics of getting that accomplished. I think it was right to split that out into a fire station, police station. We pursued the fire station. We were successful with that last year. I would like to see us come back around to the police station and not take too much longer to do it. If we, I don't know if this is something we can incorporate into this one. Obviously, we can't, you know, we can't put in any, an article that would involve like building, anything like that, but we certainly could have feasibility studies and some level of design work or consideration about what we ought to do and how it ought to look. Is that something that we would be able to accomplish in the time that we have before we have to get this, have this finalized? Or is that something that we'd have to hold off into the following year?
You could take an article to say, for example, fund the design of the police station, renovation, expansion, whatever you want to call it, to schematic design.
Yeah.
Something like that, a low level, it's like a conceptual point in the design, and that's feasible. We would have to have Paul reach out to the architects to get a cost for that, but you could bring it to that kind of level.
Yeah, I'm not looking to squeeze something out fast or furious or anything. I don't want to, it doesn't help us, and it certainly infuriates people, members of town meeting, if they feel like something's being rushed. So I definitely don't want to do that, but I want to get the conversation rolling on that, and something, I want to see something actually happen in the next couple of years.
The more I think about it, Mr. Cavie, I think the proper channel would be, let's try to figure out what we want to do with it before we do schematic design. In other words, do we want to keep it where it is and expand? Do we want to put it somewhere else, a new building, and then do something with this piece of property? Those are things that we can do internally, I think. Once we know what we want to do, then we can go schematic design for that, for that scenario.
So it might be following year would be a good time to pursue that. It's fine. So long as we start the conversation, I think I'd like to see that begin to roll because we've been aware of, between the two buildings, between the fire station and the police station, the fire station, they're currently operating out. I always refer to it as, you know, operating out of a wet paper bag. It's, they do not have a facility currently that can support a modern fire station. And so I think we're making the right move. I think I agree with everyone's assessment along the way. Move on that, make it happen. But we are aware of deficiencies within the police department. It's a building that's not even that old, but we are aware that there are deficiencies in its size and its construction and in the, really, the way the building can be used. And, you know, I think the men and women of the police department, I think we all agree, they deserve a facility that accommodates their mission. I don't think we currently have it, so I'd like to, as much as possible, start the ball rolling on getting them what they need.
That's a good point. You know, there's a lot of information that we have when it was a public safety building. We've analyzed options for expanding across the street. We were talking about the armory in the past. There were some other spots, too, that we talked about, just building a new public safety building. That can apply to just a police station.
Yeah, I think we probably have tons of documentation already to just be compiled.
Before Mr. Carrera, I just wanted to say I agree 100% with what Vice Chair Cavie is saying. And one of the things that comes to mind is the use of the armory. And it was one person's idea, that I recall, to have the, some part of the police station located at the armory. And that goes back to Vice Chair Cavie and Mr. Carrera being the liaisons to the redevelopment authority. And I know you've had several meetings, so maybe it's time to bring, have you on the agenda to talk about what your ideas are and the next steps. And that would help with the multi-year capital project plan, to try to put some context and around this whole idea of police station plus armory. And then I know Mr. McCrisky wanted to say something, too. We're all, we get so excited when we talk about these capital project plans. I couldn't wait to make that comment, but Mr. McCrisky?
No, it's a fact. We did have, there was a meeting, I believe a couple of people or one other may have been invited a while back, but I sat in for about a two-hour meeting in the urtenus room behind me where we talked extensively about the renovation of the armory as a joint project with the redevelopment authority. And I believe the redevelopment authority is still waiting for contact from us to come back and talk about that. The, sorry, the police chief was there, the fire chief was there. There was a good group of people there, and some very worthy ideas were discussed that would almost take all the citizens' interaction away from Rose Street and go up to the armory. There was also a use for recreation, you know, there was a use for elderly, you know? So I think that the longer we sit on it without putting together a subcommittee that will actually start working on it, and to take those ideas and whether we expand on, because we could almost double the size of the building, just building onto the land that we already own, we can add on to it. In this world now, we don't have secured police parking, you know, which all, where the cruises come and go should all be secured at this point. So I mean, you know, whether we build another building next to it, connect it through a roof or a mezzanine, whatever, but we've got to come up with some ideas, to Mark's point and everybody else's mention, that we do have some data, you know, when we were discussing the joint public safety building. discussing the joint public safety building. But when the, you know, costs, we're looking at over $60 million, you know, it kind of changes your mind. So I would hope that we can get this moving with working with the Redevelopment Authority, who's eager to get going with us. And I think the armory project, and I will be reaching out to the Redevelopment Authority as well on the train station, to see what we can do to interact with them. They have a very, very, very aggressive urban renewal plan, and I know that at least a couple of members of this board have been cautious at best with the size of that urban renewal plan without a plan. All it is is a map that says we want all these buildings, but it doesn't say why they want them, what they're going to do with it, how they're going to fund it, and what's the benefit to the community. And a lot of them, it's private property, so they're not going to touch that. And so, I mean, I think these two issues, if we can get them going, and the Redevelopment Authority's involved, you know, with each of them, maybe not as the, you know, the big horse in the room, or the elephant in the room, whatever we want to call it, but if we don't give them, you know, something to do, I think it's crazy on our behalf, and the residents are going to lose. The police station, we all know, needs some changes. That was another one, when there was a Stoughton resident who was the clerk of the works and was just not qualified for the job. That's how we ended up having issues with that building. You know, in the old days, we had, you know, a tendency to put the good old boy in charge of, you know, the guy who was connected, knew the town manager the longest and whatever. That was the town manager's eyes and ears over there, but it ended up being that they weren't qualified for the job that was going on, and it cost us. It cost us dearly. So I hope that we get at least these projects moving. I will, on my end, I'll take care of the train station with the Redevelopment Authority, but Madam Chair, I would encourage you to please schedule a meeting with the Redevelopment Authority, get them in here, and let's start talking about the police station. And they're sitting up there, ready to go. They want to do something, and I'd love to see us utilize them. So, thank you.
Well, welcome. Got it. Thank you very much, Mr. Calder. Yes, and we'll have a joint meeting, too, as soon as we can. Lena, please put that on our tickler list so we can get them, have a joint meeting in January, as soon as we can. Be a nice way to kick off the new year.
A tickler list, huh?
A tickler list.
What's a tickler list?
A tickler list is like your things-to-do list.
The way you are with that gavel, it should be a hammer list.
Moving right along.
You didn't get to see that one. She yielded that like four one night.
And moving right along, we have some things on the, on your list, Mr. Tisdale, that have question marks by it, like the personnel bylaw. I don't believe that is going to require funding. That's what Deanna Tracy and Human Resources and Attorney Dolan are working on. They presented to the select board, I believe it's non-financial. And then voting location charter change. Mr. Vice Chair Kavy, maybe you can help with that. Is that financial?
Not financial.
Not financial, so we can add not financial to at least those two items.
Yep. The question marks were more there to say, is that an article the select board would like on town meeting? It's a much broader.
Say that again.
The question marks were there, is that an article you're going to endorse for town meeting? Because I know it was talked about, I just wasn't sure. I put it on there. I know Mr. Kavy talked about one of them at a previous meeting, but the board didn't vote as a whole to put it on there. And the personnel bylaw, I know you've been working on that with Deanna, so if that's something that the board wants on there?
Yes, we intend to move forward on those two items. Oh, Mr. Carrera.
Through you to, through you, Madam Chairman. Through you, Madam Chairman, to Mr. Tisdale. The personnel bylaw, don't we already have one? Are we going to change the existing? Are we going to shelf one of them? Because it was voted in by town meeting.
I believe the article would be to disband the existing personnel bylaw and put a new one in its place. Is that how you understand it, Ms. Roberts?
Yes, uh-huh. Attorney Dolan did present to the select board back in August the reasons why it needed to be changed, modified, updated, and they're scheduled to come on one of our agendas so we can finalize the draft before it goes to town meeting, as well as, I really wanted Mr. Calder to see the context, the presentation, and the rationale for it, so we could get his buy-in as well, along with the select board's buy-in, before we move forward. Before we finalize anything, yes.
Are there any other articles the select board have in mind right now to add to your area?
I'm just trying to refresh my memory. I'm looking at Vice Chair Kavy. It was the voting location and...
There was, I'm still working on, trying to get finalized, a potential request to, for a change to our bylaws that would set requirements on what boards and committees would have to do for public hearings. I've spoken with our town council. He feels like, I think that that is something we can request. It's also something the select board might be able to do without town meeting's approval, to the extent that if we were only looking to influence boards and committees that we appoint, then, you know, we can just do it ourselves. If we want to influence boards and committees other than the ones we oversee, then we'd have to go to town meeting. So that would be essentially boards and committees that are, you know, come from town meeting, right? Like the finance committee, for example. However, with the exception of the finance committee, I don't believe any other boards and committees that are not overseen by the select board hold public hearings. And I don't even think that, I don't recall the finance committee holding public hearings. So it may be like a sort of, it may be unnecessary to make it a, an article.
So, for example, the Conservation Commission are appointed by the town manager.
Yeah.
So that would be a difference?
Yeah, correct.
But they're a similar board to, say, the Planning Board. So I would think the procedures you want in place for those two boards, including like the Zoning Board of Appeals, too, you'd want the same policy and procedure in place.
Yeah, I believe the document I have sort of more or less follows the guidelines given to those boards, in order to make it just essentially everyone more or less operate the same.
The only thing, the only thing you've got to remember about CONCOM and zoning, not as much the Planning Board, but zoning and CONCOM have time limits, which means when they start a process, they have so many days, and then there's an appeal process. So you've got to be careful on that because of the statutory powers that, they have dual purpose. They have town protection to worry about and state protection. That's why sometimes that's a tough thing to do, is to put rules on them because they have to meet to stop the clocks.
Yeah, that's an excellent point, Mr. Carrer. I think, so I know that the Zoning Board of Appeals is exempt from this because they have their own requirements. I know the Planning Board is as well. I don't think the Conservation Commission is, but I don't also recall, you know, we'll just make sure that we're doing this right. I don't think the language set any sort of statutory deadlines, and so it wouldn't interfere with that. I think it's more of like setting expectations about where public notices are published, and things more along those lines. But let's just, you know, but I think your point is valid, and I want to make sure that that's incorporated. And I think we might, I might just be lucky enough to say that it happens to not be a problem, but give me a couple minutes, I'll find out for you. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Calder.
One other amendment to this capital budget is on the second-to-last page under Cedar Hill. Scott just mentioned this as well. Mark and I agree that that may be a bad idea to build a diesel storage tank there on such pristine property.
I'm more worried about the pond.
Yeah, me, too. So that's Victor's request, and we put in all requests, as we talked about earlier. I just think that would be improved. I think Mark agrees.
Yes, I agree.
Talk to Victor about that unless anybody in the board insists that it remain in there. It says construct gas and diesel storage tanks.
And that's the estimated cost of $130,000?
Correct.
That's the one you're tentatively going to remove?
You're tentatively going to remove?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
If I could add one comment, too. For the downtown landscaping improvements article that the engineering department put forward, that was intended for just town hall, and that's actually for design, just design only. So, for example, we're going to survey the whole lot. There's actually going to be construction involved with redoing parking spaces and landscaping and things of that nature, with the intent that maybe some of that can be paid for by CPC next year, like the pocket park version of part of it. Mr. Gito, it's my understanding that you may want to expand the scope of that to maybe include more of the downtown, and if that's the case, this would be probably a good time to understand what that scope would be.
I'll get to you soon on that. All right. And get whatever other items in to you by the end of this week, I would expect.
Anything else, Mr. Tisdale, on this that you want to discuss before?
That's all.
Go to the next.
All I've got for now.
Okay. A quick question, going back to the positions and things. How many open vacancies do we have? Two vacancies, so two open seats.
Project engineers open. Yep.
And you still plan to combine economic development and the planner?
Yes.
Not so, okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
We're going to go back to discussing the presentation that, or the more detailed budget here. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, Mr. Gito. Are you ready for that?
The question was, the question was, we're going to go back and look more detailed at this and address the colored charts that you were talking about. Is that correct? Okay.
We're ready if you are.
Colored charts. You've got it right there. So these were, these charts were in the warrant, so it's the same information, just in two different formats. I'm sorry. The same information in two separate formats. The same information is what's listed capital in the budget.
Right.
Follow?
I was talking about some of the items.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go right ahead, sir.
Because we're waiting for that, and then we got into the others, and then we went back to that and some of the other things.
So I'm actually grateful that you raised that, Mr. Gito. We gave you three charts. That's a part that I know you wanted to address tonight on the water and sewerage. They look like this. There are three pages. They were stapled together. So back to the water and sewer issue without getting into great detail. The first chart shows the five-year look ahead on the water department, should we use that 8.2% increase per year. You see by the end of the year, where I yellow highlighted it at the very end is where it So the FY '23 is a budgeted, was a budgeted structural deficit of $1.2 million. That's the year we're in. The FY '24 structured deficit goes down to $1.1 million based on the 8.2% increase. The five-year plan of 8.2% annually erases the structural deficit. We're now in a positive retained earnings growth mode at that point. And in FY '28, the end of the fifth year, we have a balanced budget, a balanced enterprise fund. On the next page, it's the same analysis for the sewer department with a five-year 4.6% increase per year. And by the way, this can be laid out any way you want. The reason we chose five years is we've got enough subsidy funds to fund the deficit for those five years, as we work the deficit down slowly as opposed to a one-time hit right now. We've got enough money in either the MWRA fund, or in free cash, or in the operating budget to be able to do it over a five-year period. In FY '23, you're going to see a structured budgeted deficit of $897,000. In '24, it goes down to 705, and then the five-year increase of 4.6 brings us to a balanced budget by the end of fiscal '28. On the last page of that handout, I yellow highlighted down the bottom what the increase to the average residential home would be per quarter, per month, and per week, if you want to go down that far. And that's a total of water and sewerage combined. So water and sewerage combined in the first year, which is the coming year budget fiscal '24, would be about $31.74 per quarter, or about $10.58 per month. So although the rate increase sounds very alarming, I appreciate that, I'm sensitive to that, I thought it would be helpful to convert that to the actual dollars out of pocket for residents. I wish we could have come up with a different way of skirting around it, but we have two options. We either commit to the balanced budget enterprise fund over five years, three years, two years. The shorter the timeframe, the bigger the hit. You can't go beyond five years because we can't subsidize it into the sixth, seventh, and eighth year. We can't subsidize the structural deficit. So again, it's the pleasure of the board in terms of how you want to spread out that increase, and I just want to say this for the benefit of the public. I know the members already know this. For the board to vote an increase, it requires a previous public hearing. So we'll be able to publicly vet all of the questions and all of the answers. But water and sewerage is, the expenses are high. We haven't passed on increases in several years, and it's caught up with us.
So Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Gito.
If we were to look at the last page that the town manager was talking about, as I understand it, and I stand corrected if wrong, those annual increases are increases over what the last year was, so that if we look at fiscal '24, let's just look at the bottom line, estimated weekly for water and sewer. It's $2.64, but in 2005 compared to 2003, it's $5.45 because... But in 2005 compared to 2003, it's $5.45 because it's the two numbers added together. So each year, you have to make the same increase over the prior year.
That's correct.
So that by the time you get to 2028, you are at $14.98 a week. I'm not saying that to try to color it. I'm just trying to be clear on what it is that we're dealing with. And I'm saying this because we are looking at a new school two or three years down the line and so on. And maybe it would be better to have a higher cost in the first few years and get rid of that increase after that period. I don't know because we'd then be paying an increase here and we'd be paying increases on debt exclusions as well. So I mean, I think that's something that we need to think about. Five years is a good timeframe for the bucket of money that we have drawn, but you have to look at both ends, I think. And so I'm not sure where we want to be after we look at that, but I think it's something that needs to be seriously considered. And when we get to that point, people need to know what all of the pieces are. Pardon me for being Italian and sort of going like this.
So the way I look at it, this is a summary version, a high-level look at the problem and a way to solve it. But there is a public hearing coming and maybe look at those options like taking the hit upfront. What's our appetite for that? And when I say our appetite, that means the town of Stoughton's appetite. Or spreading it out evenly so it's just a minimal increase over time. What does that mean? And having a multi-year special capital project plan in place will help us really see what would be more beneficial and what we have the appetite for and what else is coming down the pike.
Right.
Because we talked about police station. We talked about the armory. There are other things that are coming. We know the school has some items, special capital project items too. So look at them in aggregate so we can, and this probably will take more than one discussion about this because this is very important that we solve for the problem. So thank you. Anything else you wanted to discuss for tonight?
There's things that I want to discuss for tonight.
Okay. We do have another opportunity.
No, I want to do it tonight while we're at it. Okay.
We do have two other opportunities, two other meetings.
Yes.
To talk about the budget.
Yeah.
And not run it because it's 9:44 PM. Your, what you want to discuss is important, but I just want to be mindful.
Yes.
At two other times.
In the town manager's budget and in his presentation, he had talked about basically providing opportunities for people to advance and to get more training and so on. There isn't anything in his budget that, there's no way to pay for that. And I think we should put something in that budget to do that. Maybe $25,000 would be the right number. I have no idea. But I would suggest that he might want to suggest something to us at the appropriate time. Because I think that's really important if we are going to think about how people are going to take on other responsibilities and not increase staff. So that's one thing.
And that is so very important because looking, combining tasks is, that's efficient, right? But we want them to do that job efficiently. So training plays a big part in that.
I completely agree. I couldn't find a place in the budget to add for professional development beyond what I can give our staff because it is as tight as it is. But your point is right on. I think for us to talk about professional development but to not budget more than $4,000
It would be a shame for us not to use your expertise also because in fact, you understand that as part of your career. And my expectation is, and I think probably I'm not the only one here, we do need to help people become what they would like to be. And so, I mean, this would be just a down payment on that. And it may be more next year, may not have to be more next year. I don't know. But you need to have something to work with. The second item.
That's a good point too. Also, a manual, a procedure manual. How do you do a task, you know, so someone can just come without knowing how to do something? You pick up a manual and it's a step-by-step approach like what's needed for a license? A liquor license, an alcohol license, I'm sorry. Yeah. Some people don't struggle.
Lena's well on her way to having that developed.
But also, I saw the 300th anniversary. There were no funds put into that. And maybe it's time to look at, for that committee, that subcommittee to look at applying for grants because I'm sure there are businesses in the town that want to contribute. But that's off task. But I'm just saying, put some dollars toward that. Vice Chair Cavy.
Do I still have the floor or not?
Vice Chair Cavy kind of nudge me because he wanted to say something about something that I was saying that was wrong.
And then we'll go back to you.
That'll be fine.
To make a comment.
I just don't want to get left out here. I've got about a list of three or four things.
I want you to be able to get through that. So I was making a very quick statement, just that it might be good to revisit funding that account at a special town meeting once we know what free cash is. It's going to be money that we'd be able to use at that point for something like this and it won't affect anybody's budget. But that was all I was going to say. But all yours, Mr. Gito.
You heard what he said about free cash, funding for the account, and then it's all yours.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're done? I think, when I looked at the budget, I saw some items that were, that didn't seem to make an awful lot of sense to me. I talked with the town manager about them. He might want to talk with you about them rather than my bringing them up right now. But he knows, he knows where at least one major issue seems to be. And I hope it can get corrected. If it can't, then maybe I'll talk about it next week. The other, the other thing, I can, I can go by a couple of the items here and deal with them later because I know that we're probably getting tired. But there is one item that I think is really important. And that relates to the town-school split of percentage that the town is going to provide to the schools. And I say that not because I don't think that education is important. I think that I have a pretty good record in terms of supporting the schools. I say that because in, just a few months ago, the schools got about an 8% or more jump in their budget, which I understand is going to be continued. It's not a one-time shot. It's every year, they're going to get $4 million more. If I'm mistaken, stop me right now.
That's my understanding too, Mr. Gito.
Then I think it's important to take a peek at that $4 million on top of what they ordinarily would get, which might be a 3% jump. They're getting $1.1 million with that 2% that we're talking about here on top of $4 million when in fact, they were spending almost $3 million, a little less than that, this past year. Granted, it was for late in the year, so they weren't able to fully plan for it. But getting basically what turns out to be a 10% bump within about a year and a half is a huge, huge change for any department. And I think that the town has a lot of needs as well. I'm not sure where that 2% commitment came from. I don't recall the board voting on that, but maybe I just went to sleep during the middle of a meeting. I don't generally do that though. And so I would look carefully at whether or not that should be our commitment because we have, I think, demonstrated that there are a lot of needs on the town side of the budget that need to be addressed. So I would put that out as a challenge to us to think about. I know it's not a fun thing to say, but I think it's something that needs to be said. It doesn't mean that in future years, we don't address that issue again, but it seems like in this particular year, maybe, maybe we should be doing something a little different. Nobody, everybody's looking very unhappy. Unless you would like me to do something more in terms of making motions or something like that, but I don't think we're at that point yet. I think we're more in the discussion, let's talk about phase. Am I wrong?
Madam Chair?
Vice Chair Cavy.
Yeah, I, I'm going to have to spend some, personally, I just speak for myself. I'm going to need some time to sort of meditate on this a little bit. Sure, yeah, I'm going to need a little bit of time.
People don't understand that we're sitting about 20 feet apart here.
Yeah.
We're not having a conversation. We're, but people at home don't understand that because they're hearing each one of us talking as though we could hear one another. We know that this particular room is an absorber of sound and people can't hear one another. We've known that for years. So we have to be careful in speaking. I try to speak loudly enough so that people can hear me because I know that the conversation is between us and we need to hear one another. So I'm not, when I say please speak into the microphone, I'm not trying to diss you or anything else. What I'm trying to do is to make sure that we are conversing in a way that we are productive. And if we can't do that, then in fact, we are not serving the people that we're, that we're sent here to serve. So please don't take my, would you please spike into the mic in a disparaging way?
Not a problem. I've got a very thick skin and even with that being said, I never took any offense from you. I just, I assume that you, you're right. It's hard to hear here in this room. So I've got no problems speaking into the mic. So given what you've said, I do want to spend some time thinking about it. I will just register my main concern with the increase the schools received was indicative of the state recognizing that our students need additional funds. And so any effort to siphon some of that off or sort of change the way that we operate, I would be reticent to do. I would want to really mull that over and make sure there's a lot of buy-in. But I, yeah, I've got nothing else to say. So it looks like some of us might be gearing up for an early start.
The 10:00 PM rule.
I've got three more, two more minutes, two more minutes. But no, I, unless anybody else has anything else to say, I will make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Good night, everyone. See you next time. Thank you.